I'm going to entertain a motion to sign the account payable claims.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Same on payroll claims.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sheriff, what do you got today?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This morning we have sixty-three people in Orange County Jail. I think, well, ourselves are talking about the truck there.
Um, you can give them updates.
Okay. Team OC has partnered with us and we're going to wrap one of the patrol vehicles in a suicide awareness. Uh, maybe out and about again, uh, take it to events. Something that's near to a lot of our hearts and really appreciate ourselves that.
And then you also asked another request that we're working on, you mentioned that?
We also have a big trade that will take the parts, the trucks and the schools and we're going to look at possibly getting it wrapped. Those are exciting to me, um, next month. Something really good. Um, I'd like to request the Commissioner to hire a vacancy for that.
Motion made?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
I also need the Commissioner to hire a new jail.
Motion made?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
And I've been talking to Carl Moore about, uh, as soon as they're get, uh, get done paving, we're going to throw it on the right. Needing here. I really appreciate you guys coming up there. It's easy to work with you guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's all I have to do.
Thank you, gentlemen. Oh, do I need to bring that up?
Yes, Sheriff, he has the hiring incentive for the certified law enforcement officers. I sent the reimbursement agreement to Commissioners and Davey for review, which I believe Sheriff is good with that. That would offer a five thousand dollar hiring incentive to certified law enforcement officers that maintain employment with the county.
I'll make the motion when you approve.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
That much I appreciate.
Well, that'll help. All right, so, yes, Sheriff?
Yes, sir.
Now, three minutes just had early, so everybody ahead of now. Carl, go ahead with your report. We may have to interrupt you because we've got a nine to five.
All right. Morning Commissioners, Orange County Highway crews started paving on Monday in the Orleans Township on County Road two hundred east, just north of Mount Pleasant Church. Uh, that road was finished on Monday and we moved down to County Road ten forty-five west, Jackson Township. We should be able to get that road completed by the end of the week. Uh, we ask for the public's patience over the next couple of months. We are in the thick of paving and chipping ceiling. Please slow down anytime you're in a work zone. Please avoid the work zones if at all possible. We had a really close call Monday. Got a guy come pass the paper at about sixty miles an hour. One of my guys would have happened to step out there in the way and it would have killed him. Just ask the public's patience when they're coming into the work zone. Uh, Calcar paving is also coming into the county soon. Start the CCMG roads. Their schedule has been pushed back due to weather, a lot of rain. I'd like to ask permission to approach the County Council for additional appropriation, an amount of eighty thousand dollars for the reimbursable safety grant from N-Dog that Orange County was awarded in the amount of ninety thousand dollars. USI Consultants were awarded the contract to get a true sign inventory in Orange County using BioLetics, the latest AI-generated software. This will also GPS pinpoint every sign that we have in the county. Uh, the AI software will also pays the rate every foot of our county roads at no additional cost. The grant is ninety percent reimbursable back to the county. Orange County will only be responsible for nine thousand dollars, the ninety thousand dollar grant, uh, which will, uh, be paid upfront. The way the reimbursable grant works, we have to pay it all upfront and then we get a reimbursement from the state on that. So, I would.
How does it normally take, Carl, on the reimbursement?
Uh, the turnaround, like on the bridge inspection's been pretty quick. They, they're kind of expediting that stuff anymore. We're getting very quick turnaround, like within a thirty-day turnaround.
Motion?
Aye, motion for the second.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, say if I'm saying that.
Aye.
We're going to suspend for just a minute.
Okay, perfect. I will call the public hearing on the petition to vacate public way for a street in Orange County, Indiana, submitted by petitioner Jerry Weiniger. I will call that public hearing to order. It is nine oh six AM. Mr. Weiniger did submit a petition and filed that with the county to vacate a street located in Orange County, Indiana, in the John H. Alstott's addition. That was prepared, sent to Commissioners, filed, and then advertised for in both of the local papers for public hearing today. So I will now open that up. Any citizen may give testimony at this hearing concerning whether the public way should be closed. I will let Mr. Weiniger speak first as petitioner to Commissioners.
Okay, yeah, well, I purchased the other property on that lot where I'm at. They had alleyway right in between both of it for the addition that they were going to have and him did. And all I wanted was just to get rid of the one alley there between the both properties so that I'm going to want it on both sides.
This is where the trailer's at?
Well, the trailer's there, not the road for the, the, uh, Orange County Fire Department.
Right.
That road, it's just, it was supposed to be an alley, there's nothing there. It's just the land and, you know, that's why I just vacated it because I own whole properties now. And there's no reason for an alley either to, this, oh, but not the road part, just the land part where they should have been, it's gravel or something.
Is there anyone else here to speak for or against the pro, the proposed petition to vacate?
I had a question on that.
What's your name, sir?
Carl Allen.
Carl Allen, okay, go ahead.
I own, uh, lot number thirty-nine there, right next to it. And, uh, it, uh, state law says that each property owner gets half of the property that, uh, is vacated. And I want to make sure that that happens. And I wondered if, uh, the county, uh, surveyor will move the pins, survey pins that are there. Cause I've had my property surveyed and, uh, the pin should be moved ten foot north and ten foot south on, for him.
That's a question for the surveyor, Matt Cooper, as far as the pins. I don't know the answer to that. And then on the half, are you an adjoining property owner?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so I was, I don't.
I don't think this is too different. I think these are too different, Carl. This is an alley in between his two. This is not the alley by you.
It's not going to be.
He didn't petition for that alley. You guys can in the future, but that's not what this alley is.
Oh, I thought it did.
Yeah, it's.
It should have just been the strip that you were talking about with respect. Cause I.
No, well, I was, I was talking about that and the other one, but the one in between where, uh, I guess it was Skeeter, they call him, used to live in that one. In between that and where I've got mine right across, uh, about his part. And there was one in between there and then one between us. And I meant for that other one too, but I guess I didn't.
Yeah, I didn't, cause I don't have you as an adjoining landowner. I just have Mr. Weiniger. That was the only individual.
That was that one up in between my place and Skeeter's. But we can on that if you want. I mean, I don't know what we have to do for that.
That would be a separate petition to vacate, so, for that strip of land.
Okay.
So, are you wanting to do that?
I will too, if you will.
And you guys are the only, are there any other adjoining landowners for that?
Not on that, not on that, I think it's just me.
Yeah, we're open to that. It's, we, we just keep, they're set, we have to do them separately. This is the one, the alley across, I guess, from like Liz Ann Kendall's trailer.
Oh.
Is where this alley is.
Well, the way it reads, it said it goes to the highway, uh, right away. And that's the, that's the alley that goes out to the state road.
I don't believe so, but we can ask Matt Cooper as far as that goes, respect to it.
And if you look at the, uh, advertisement, it talks about going out to, and I don't know exactly where it's at, but it says it goes out to the highway right away.
Yeah, I believe it was just the strip that was between the properties that you own, Mr. Weiniger.
Both my, like where my house is across from the fire department and then Liz is over here. And I, I bought this section too, so it's the whole kind of block up there. And there was one going this way in between the two properties and that's the one I was getting rid of. And then I was going to see about the other, but I guess I could do that separate with you if you want to do that later, I'll do it with you.
But it, uh, the way I understood it, by going to the highway, um, my property fronts to the highway one forty-five there. And comes out and meets his property. And, uh, the way it's described in here, it sounds to me like, if you read it, it sounds to me like, uh, that's the alley that, that's talking about, but, uh.
No, it's that one in between, but I mean, I don't know. And then the other, I think they're talking about the state is where the state owns, like the bank off the one forty-five, they own so much that.
Cause we can check for sure, cause I mean, you, you ought, yeah, you certainly would be deserving of the other half if we, if we vacate. I mean, there's no question there.
My question.
Absolutely. And then do you have any objections to it? It sounds like you're in favor. Okay, all right. So we'll check and certainly with respect to that. And then if you guys have to file another petition, I'll notify you, okay?
Okay.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak out in favor of or against the proposed petition to vacate? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at nine thirteen. I do have an ordinance prepared for Commissioners if you wish to entertain that. It's ordinance number twenty twenty-five oh seven, vacating the public way. It'll get reported.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, say if I'm saying that.
Aye.
Thank you.
Carl, we'll go ahead and resume with your report.
Okay, I really only have one more thing. Tucker and Tucker has prepared a de resolution, worded more pleasing to N-Dog on their designated signer for all N-Dog contracts. That's, that's the only other thing I have.
And that's resolution twenty twenty-five oh seven, authorizing the president to sign Indiana Department of Transportation agreement. So they wanted it to be more general and not specific with respect to grants.
No problem with that?
No.
I'll make a motion, then we approve.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, say if I'm saying that.
Aye.
I do believe Lynn worded it how they asked her to word it before.
Yes.
We kept rolling it over, how they changed.
Yes.
They went differently, which.
You have, Sheriff?
Yes.
Major's report.
Good morning.
Morning.
I don't have much to actually report on everything I have, it's still in the works. I am meeting with the Black phone guy from Circuit Court tomorrow. He's not going to do anything, just view the side and I guess get a game. The post was supposed to be delivered on nine one. His conversation with me was, they're really going to try and have it in by the fourteen, but he, he won't guarantee that date. So, that's where we are on that. I don't have any. Hopefully it will be in, you know. Uh, me and Steve's working on some stuff at the community center. Nothing to record about that, but, uh, that's, I mean, really, it's about all I got, other than working out there at the factory, which is a plan. That's, that's a task, so.
Oh, yeah?
That's all I got.
All right. Mr. Emery, what do you got today?
Good morning. I'd like to, whatever I know, that the FEMA meetings that we had a couple of weeks ago all went very well. There's some details that FEMA's wanting to get worked out with all the different applicants. Were, were approved, we just got given some details on stuff going there. As far as the fire trainings facility, uh, the deck of the FEMA meetings is when the Lone Star showed up and they have completed the build. Uh, it's done, and in fact, last weekend, uh, the instructors from the Fire Marshal's Office came down and taught a class up there, teaching how to, uh, train the trainer, how to do live burns in these type of facilities. At a bunch of people up there and a lot of instructors were, uh, were trained on it. So, it's, it's a good thing. There's a dedication that needs to be worked out. Palely Fire is working on details on what the date and getting all the proper people notified. I just want to say, John Shafer from the Fire Marshal's Office came in and he's the one that looked at the original piece of property. He's completely amazed. He said, from where we were at to where we are today and the amount of work and cooperation that it took, not only from County Highway, the town of Paola kicking in, all the donations, we had private industry, the firefighters coming together and making this happen. It, it was really a good project and it's going to be great for our community.
Will there be a public, like an, uh, open house or anything for the public to see it?
Yes, they'll have a dedication, an open house. They'll, uh, of course, this actually came under Eric Hoakum's tenure as governor. Joel has moved on from IDHS. He's now with the Fire Department at Norwood. We'll probably invite him down as well, as well as the current governor, cause he's continued to back and support everything going through. But yes, there'll be a, uh, an open house and it'll be available for people to come up and take a look at. It's, it's pretty amazing.
Instructor's pretty impressive.
It, it is.
On your book there, just more good than I told you.
Yes, yeah, very good on that. Uh, the other thing I have, uh, IDHS is about broken. They finally gave some information on the ENPG salary grant. Information I have for Orange County, we would receive up to twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars on salary reimbursement for the twenty twenty-five. I just needed permission to apply.
Motion for that?
I'll make the motion when you approve.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, say if I'm saying that.
Aye.
And just the other thing I, I wanted to pick in there is I wanted to thank Sandy and her folks because I've been getting a lot of information to close out the twenty twenty-four. I don't know, it seems like they make changes just to make changes, so. Uh, there's a lot of things that they're on that is, and we're like, oh, we really don't know what that is. What are you asking for? So, I appreciate all your help.
I think we got a lot.
Yeah, I, I, Con just sent a thing to me yesterday afternoon that she would be getting that desktop all of it closed out. So, we, we did good on all of it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any questions? Mac, you have anything?
Today, I'll chair support a couple of other folks in Audi. More than a couple, I guess. I didn't know this guy was going to be here.
That's the most important.
He's the important one right here. Yeah, no, all's good. Appreciate y'all.
Heather?
Good day, thank you.
Shall I?
Um, I just wanted to mention that, um, the opioid CD is coming due next, or it's maturing, uh, next week. So I didn't know if there was reinvestment you wanted me to work on or Brady, or Dr. Carol had asked for some information and we gathered all that up for her to finish out her yearly.
yearly report.
yearly report. So I wasn't sure if we were.
We've already had our dispersments.
I think it's safe to re, to reinvest, um, because the next draws from any of that money will not be right away cause you usually do a ninety day, is that right at least?
It, it's what you want.
That would at least cover, there's some things, there's some decisions that you're going to have to make here before too long, but I don't think that that means moving any money right away. So, I think at least a ninety day reinvestment would be fine, as far as our timelines go.
Are the rates much different between ninety and six months?
They can be, they can be. Um, right now, we, I was wanting to get something rolling. We had our wagering CD mature and we were able to get a really good rate of four point six five for a year. And that's really good right now. Um, so then I took another million dollars and we, we invested because I, you, you can't get that, you know? But I don't know if that special's still going on, but I thought the timing of it would be really good.
What's your thoughts in six months rather than ninety days?
I think you could do it. I think that there's, there's a few dollars that we've talked about that may, we may need to figure out what, what to do with in that timeline, but the majority should, six months should be fine. Cause you're not going to be distributing any money for the mini grants until maybe this time next year or whatever. So, that's fine. And then the, um, the, or the, uh, the, the grant that's current, um, where you could, we could potentially, you know, double the money, that is something that we have to talk about. And even then, those dispersments aren't until July twenty twenty-six, I believe. So, I mean, you should be fine unless somebody changes the goalpost on us, which could, could, but unlikely.
I, I make a motion, we allow the treasurer, however she sees fit, to invest our six-month CD.
It's your fund.
Unless you, unless, I mean, if they have a ninety day that's the same rate or something, you know, whatever, just whatever her.
Is there a certain amount? Do I need to leave a certain amount in the fund, restricted or unrestricted, or?
What were you gonna do, eighty, eighty-something?
Uh, eighty-three is, well, I don't, I don't, I can't answer that because I don't, they didn't, I don't know how much they didn't use. We, we cut a check for eighty-five thousand, but I don't think you spent it all.
Well, but that's not, that's in the foundation.
So that's already gone.
So it would not, it's just whatever.
The foundation, we make dispersment.
Foundation still has left over because they're going to, they're going to do some other things with it. But what you're talking about is just what you have on hand is what is going in, yeah.
Correct.
So I think the full amount.
Okay.
Good deal.
Make a nine.
Yeah.
All we can.
Up to six months.
Up to six months.
Yes.
You made a motion, I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor, say if I'm saying that.
Aye.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
All righty. Uh, Catherine?
Good morning Commissioners, Auditor, and Commissioner. On behalf of this year's Wage Committee, we would like to propose a following stipend for twenty twenty-six. Employees, part-time will receive an eight hundred dollar stipend divided into two installments, March and September. Full-time employees will receive two thousand two hundred and forty dollars divided into two installments. To a qualify for the installments, employees must be employed March twenty twenty-five for the March twenty twenty-six installment. Second installment will be September twenty twenty-six. Employee must be employed September of twenty twenty-five. Employees are only eligible for one stipend, no matter other obligations of your job requirements. The following employees are exempt from receiving the stipend. Seasonal employees, grant employees, state salary mandated employees. The following employees have decided to not participate due to uncertainty of the future, excuse me, of the future. Council members, Commissioners, and the Sheriff.
No question. Anybody, this is in lieu of raises?
This is in lieu of raises for twenty twenty-six.
I will make a motion and we take the Salary Committee's recommendation.
And I will second that motion.
Motion is second, all in favor, say if I'm saying that.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Has me, we'll tomorrow. All right. Anything else?
I have nothing else, thank you.
Chad, you have anything?
I don't, just here's for.
Okay, all right. What we got here? Amy? What's she got here?
Um, the Community Center Board met on Monday and we discussed some things in regards to, so, Meyer Maintenance at U-Highway Community Center. Um, but one of our, um, discussions I would like to bring to Commissioners today is that we would like to make some adjustments to, adjustments to the current rental fees. In our discussion, um, I had mentioned that, um, B, uh, cause there are three conference rooms. Conference room B being the smallest of the three, um, is set currently at the same rate as C, which is almost twice the size. And, um, there are many times where I have people that are wanting to do, um, like a small birthday party or a baby shower or bridal shower, something of that nature. Um, and oftentimes I'm told, okay, that's too much, you know, too much money because they, on top of the rental fee, they also have a five hundred dollar damage deposit. And, um, so we discussed the reducing that fee from one seventy-five, that what we currently charge, to a hundred and twenty-five dollars um, in hopes to encourage some of these rentals for these smaller events. Um, we also discussed, um, adding an extra setup fee, um, for an, an early setup the day before the rental. And, um, we discussed how that can benefit, um, not only, you know, people that are having a party or a wedding reception, but also some of these, um, conferences that come in, that businesses and things that, that hold meetings there. Um, it, it would be very beneficial for, for several of them to be able to set up the day before. So we discussed adding a, um, early setup fee for a hundred dollars. Um, and this would be across the board. So whether they rent one conference room or whether they rent the entire thing, they would, um, pay an, an additional one hundred dollars to be able to go in the day before and set up. And, um, we decided that all other pricing, um, should remain the same, including the two-day rate for the, um, rooms A, B, and C with the kitchen, which is running the entire thing. Um, that rental rate is currently five hundred dollars and then seven fifty for two days. Um, oftentimes when someone rents the entire facility, it's going to be a rather large event. And so, um, we understand that there are a lot of, um, you know, business factors that go into keeping that rate the same. Um, and then if they were to request an additional day on top of that two-day rental, uh, we would like to suggest that that be for that one hundred dollar early setup fee. And, um, I would like to recommend that that be, uh, just clarified as an early setup fee, not necessarily a two-day rental fee, um, because I think that otherwise there would be people that would, you know, extend their thing possibly into two days and that's not the goal that we're trying to reach with this early setup. What time could they begin the early setup the day before? The current rentals are for the calendar day and so I think that it would just be extended for the calendar day. Allow them the time to go in whatever is needed for them to get that set up.
And this would only be allowed if there is not back-to-back rooms.
Right, yes, yeah.
We decided.
Building is rented that day, it would be available.
It would be available. And.
Right, yeah, so like if it, let's say it was rented on a Wednesday already and they reserve for a Thursday, they would not be able to go in, you know, ahead of time.
We get a lot of time for prom at things.
The building is already rented at that point, so.
And we decided not to take, uh, reservations to that also. You couldn't, you couldn't reserve that with that option since months out.
Right. But if they were not rented, you know, and they want to go in, you know, kind of big up their. So I don't know if you want to set a timeframe for that as well, if it's, you know, if you say if it, if two weeks beforehand they can call in and if the room has not been rented, they can have, they can have on that early setup.
Thoughts on that?
Do you think two weeks is sufficient?
I think two weeks is sufficient, cause there, oftentimes somebody's not going to plan something unless.
Not a big event, man.
Okay, yeah, I'm good with that.
Do you want to make a recommendation?
Probably changes?
Yes. I will second.
On the early entry, I think it ought to have a time.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking as far as, that's what I was curious about, you know.
Five P M or whatever, but I think it needs to be something.
Yeah, I'm open to that as well, you know.
Okay. Well, we've got a timeframe between noon and five.
Or should we just say af, after a certain time?
I was going to say, they're going to pick the key up though, I mean, I think we should, we're open to a fore. I think we should open it while we have business hours for them to get the key.
Right, it's kind of what I was thinking, that noon to five.
Right.
Hey, gentlemen, I can just offer a suggestion. We've got a lot of big events there and it's taken a lot of time to set up for like Inspire and Mess and others. So, just my suggestion, if I was doing an event, I would probably need the keys by twelve and I'm probably there pretty late to set up because it's been for like a hundred, two hundred, three hundred people. So that is moving all the tables out, the tablecloths, getting the rental equipment in there, it's just a lot of work. Yeah.
And to add to that, I don't think we mentioned it again, like I said, there was talk the last time this was brought up about having a, um, a setup fee where it could already be set up and be torn down. Last night we had our four H meeting there and they didn't get over till seven fifteen and, man, I'm tired, like.
We've had dinners there and then it's, the dinner's over, now you gotta pull the tables up and you're like.
So I, I don't know, is that was mentioned, uh, do you, you know, I don't know how to work the logistics out, but I'm telling you, some people who rent that for reunions and things, they don't have the, the person power and they don't have the, you know, just the, the physical ability to be moving all those things.
But we're gonna have to find someone that we can pay to do it.
I'd like to not drop something on that as well, yeah, but, but.
We are working on that.
Okay.
Okay, we are, we are working on that. That did come up.
Okay.
And to answer the other question, noon is finally, let's, let's just call it noon, I'll make that recommendation.
I will second that recommendation.
Alright, motion to second on the favor?
Aye.
And then with the discussion that we had about the, um, setup fee for, um, setting up the tables and chairs for people to choose to have that, uh, we did discuss that. We talked about the frozen cons of whether or not that should be, um, within the rental agreement or if it should be something that's kind of an outside contract. Um, so currently, um, we just had, um, very recently Lisa Thomas take over the cleaning and Lisa has her own events business. And so the board discussed contacting Lisa and asking her if she would be interested, um, completely separate from the rental of being, uh, in a referral status so that she could go in and set up things for people if they were, um, interested in having something set up for them in advance. And so I did actually discuss with her yesterday on that note and she was actually very excited about the idea of it. Um, she is going to provide some layout diagrams, um, because she said she has set up that thing up pretty much any way that you can set it up, um, herself being the wedding coordinator for many of the weddings that happen there. And, um, she will also determine a price for those services. And so then she will provide that information to the, um, extension office so that when people are asking about those services, we can give her name and number as a referral and also that these are, you know, the, um, the ways that she can lay it out and this is the pricing that she offers for that service.
That will, that would be an agreement between her and the renter.
Yes, it will be completely separate from.
County would have nothing.
Yeah, completely separate.
That's totally good legally.
Yep, that's fine.
We figured that was the best one.
Good with me? Alright.
And that's all that I, for today.
Anything you want to ask?
No, I think she pretty much covered it other than. Um, we did talk about a camera for the, uh, I think Carl had brought that up.
The bookie mod, yes.
And I had already talked to Frankie before the meeting. We have one that will be installed. And ready. And it will be facing the heart of mine.
Good. That's all I have from you.
Uh, yes, Frankie said he already has one and we'll get that installed and we'll be good to go. Everything else I think we've covered from the last meeting. Uh, there were some other issues that was taken care of. I think everything's good.
Okay. Okay, so you need to, on anything else? Is that, I'm gonna jump to you real quick. You probably got something you need to do.
Sure, thank you.
Alright.
Uh, so I'm here on behalf of Ben and Shelley Reynolds. I'm sure you guys are aware of the bridge, Old Iron Bridge on three ninety north, is that right Carl? It's been closed for a few months and talked with Carl yesterday. I don't think there's any plans to fix that in the future, is that right? Okay. So we would just ask permission to put up some gates on both sides of the bridge. On the east side, it would be like a half mile down where the property line starts. We put one there. And on the west side, uh, it's up to Matt Cooper mark that one, but we'll put one there. Just asking permission for that.
Do you see any issue with it Carl?
Long as, uh, the, uh, all the landowners that are in play agree and that, that will have, have those legal aspects of that.
Yeah, so it's just one landowner, my mom and dad through there. This won't impact the, there's a house out there, but the gate will be on, past the house, so it won't impact that house.
One, two house?
Hoosier National, but it won't.
You know, I, I, my preference, and I told Matt this yesterday, my preference would be to move that gate up near the other driveway on the other side of the bridge as, as far as we can get it, and, and I don't know if that would create an issue with the forest or not. We could always provide a little key to the gate if that were the case. But I think we're better off if we can keep vehicles from getting deep into that area.
Yeah, well, as you can imagine, a, a closed bridge on a dead-end road off the beaten path doesn't attract the good things. So there's been a lot of trash, you know, alcohol, bottles, cans, weird signs, chairs, rugs, um, erasing, um, on the road there, so just a lot of nefarious activity. I think the gate will solve some of that.
I think the closer we can get the gate to, to an occupied residence, if possible, but I think we're off where we are there because, you know, it's bad enough. Even with the gate, they're gonna try to get around it somehow.
Yeah. And, and I think I'll assess permission for the gates today, but, um, if it's pretty, if it's clear the county's not gonna fix that, I think probably the best thing to do would petition to close the bridge and that part of that road would probably be the best thing that we can do that later down the road.
I, I agree. I think it's something you look at.
We're gonna hate to take a ridge off roadway. I'm kidding.
I think Carl wishes he could close the entire road.
And fifteen more, yeah.
Get a motion, get one on that.
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Motion to second on the favor of six months, they got it.
Aye.
Thank you. I'm gonna head out of here.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Julie, you're up.
Alright, so I went ahead and gave you guys our reports from the central office from Veronica and myself. And so, um, just to start off, so I know you guys are numbers gentlemen, and so I went ahead and pulled the numbers and I handwrote on there. So these are the numbers. So for the twenty twenty five fair, we had two hundred and sixty-four exhibitors, both including, um, a hundred and ninety-seven club members and sixty-seven mini four-H members. Um, I actually just learned how to pull these, how to properly pull these numbers so that they are as accurate as possible. And so I am currently working on pulling the twenty-three and twenty-four numbers and I'll get those to you guys as soon as I have those. Um, along with twenty-five, there were seventy-seven volunteers. Um, we had two hundred and thirty static exhibits and four hundred and twenty-two livestock animals. And so, again, I'm gonna pull those numbers for previous years just to see increase or increase or decrease type of thing. Um, along with that, we promoted fifty-five static exhibitors to the state fair from the exhibit hall. And again, that's just the exhibitors. I did put exhibits on there, so I'm sorry, that's a typo. I'm sorry. Um, livestock numbers, so at the state fair, the numbers actually have to be pulled based upon the species and so I'm working on pulling those per species. Um, I did have the opportunity, so I was graciously asked by the state four-H staff to be the show manager of the dairy feeder show. So this was the first year that the dairy feeder calves were separate from the beef cattle and dairy beef cattle at the Indiana State Fair. And, um, I kind of have a hard time saying no when state four-H staff asks me, so I obviously said yes. And it was actually a really awesome opportunity for me. I was able to learn more about the animal DNA process, animal IDing, and definitely animal DNA. And so that was something that I learned a lot on. I was also able to collaborate with the team of educators all across the state to just learn how they do things in their county. Um, we had RFID scanners that we used up there and so I'm actually gonna be talking with, later on down in my report, I'm gonna be going to different educators in different counties just to see what they have in their programming and to see how we here in Orange County can build our supplies up. But then also by using these RFID scanners at the state fair, it got me thinking, how can we use them here in Orange County and how can we also use them to benefit the farmers in Orange County as well? For any farmers who may have RFID's on their animals as well. And so I'll be looking into that as well and I'll keep you guys updated. Um, last night we had our four-H program debrief with just our approved volunteers and so it was well attended. We pretty much just discussed, thanks Steve for coming. Um, we discussed positive vibes, improvements that we can do and different program opportunities for the four-H program as an entire whole. Um, a couple of quick things that we have going on for four-H is, um, we have the four-H kickoff happening on Monday, October twenty-seventh at the community center. We're still working out the fine minute details, but once we have that, we'll let you guys know on that. Um, we also will be working on doing a four-H orientation, kind of like a four-H one-on-one how-to, um, for both families and volunteers. That was something that we, uh, collectively as a Purdue Extension Office, we decided it would be a good thing to have for our families and so we're gonna be doing that. And then, um, we're going to be revising the four-H exhibitor handbook with the four-H council. Um, as far as A and R side of things go, over the summer I've been doing a lot of networking in the communities alongside of, I've been having a lot of site visits and client phone calls. Along with this, I've actually used the Purdue, Purdue pesticide diagnostic lab up at, up at campus. And so what that is, is if a client, um, would like, has an issue going on with their, for example, blueberry bush, they can actually bring it in to me and I can take the sample and send it up to the Purdue diagnostic lab. They take it and then they run it under their microscopes, do all the lab things that they need to do. And then they'll actually send their report to myself and then I'll go out to the client and then we'll go over that report, just discuss with them different potential ways of what they can do to minu- and take everything down and eradicate the issue. So I've been doing that a lot. I've had one of those and I've, I've gotta go out and go, go to another one as well. I've also been working, um, with other educators. Um, I did put on a gardening one-on-one class in Harrison County with an educator, with the educator there, and so I've been assisting her on that. Some future planning that I have is on November sixth, any private applicator. Um, we have our annual park course, so private applicator renewal program. So you get, it is free cost to any private applicators. You have to RSVP by November third. You can go to Crawford County, Washington County, or Scott County. And then there's also, for anyone who is commercially certified, we are also having an area-wide program for commercial applicators as well on November twentieth at Clark County R E M C. And so one thing that I also plan on doing is, over the next couple, several months, I plan on doing a soil health series just to help gardeners and farmers prepare their land for the fall, or for winter, excuse me. And then, um, one, one last thing is as my county extension director role, one thing that I am in charge of is P, is P carrot. Again, we are always looking for new members to help advocate for Purdue Extension.
You put in information?
Yeah, thank you guys. Um, the next one, uh, I do have Veronica's and her report is here. She just asked me to read the summary for you guys. And so pretty much over the past year, she has focused on health, nutrition, and youth leadership and community engagement all across Orange County. A couple of programs that she's done is Get Walkin', Be Heart Smart, and Service Learning. She's engaged sixty-plus participants through Direct Health. Um, she's been working with T M O C, Heart Corps, and Hoosier Uplands in, in the local libraries. Um, she has efforts to expand her food safety or serve safe program by budgeting literacy, some mixed results. Um, with the improvements in the outreach and scheduling, she does plan to do, um, two different programs called Chef University and Family Dinner Project. Any questions?
I do, I, uh, I'm still concerned about the number of exhibitors we've got, number of members. I mean, it just seems like we're still, we're still hemorrhaging members.
Yep.
I can remember a time when we were up to four hundred, you know, and it seemed like we'd never recovered from COVID period. And I, I'm not sure what the number was at that period, but I know it was much higher than two hundred and sixty-four. You know, what's the answer to that? That's what I'm asking. What, is there anything we can do to increase membership? We get more, more children involved? Is the culture changing? What's going on?
So that's one thing that I'm still planning to fig- I'm still working on and Veronica as well. And so one thing that we do plan on doing is we do plan on implementing ways to keep our families that we currently have and also recruit new families. And we're hoping that the, that the four-H orientation, and we're also planning on doing some different videos so that way, because we did host four-H online nights and fair entry nights to help families just with those systems, because they can be, they can be confusing. And so with that, we're planning on doing some, we did some nights, we're still gonna have those as well. And then we're also gonna have some orientation nights to help keep those. And then I also put together a school pamphlet and I'm sending it over to the schools just, just to let teachers know, hey, we can come into your classroom, here are some examples, and then that we can also recruit in the schools as well.
Okay, you know, it's a concern for the county because the one thing it hasn't changed is the amount of money that's required to.
Right.
To provide for the, for four-H. And, you know, not everything's about money, but I would like to see the number, if there's any way we can get them up.
And.
See more, more kids involved in them.
And that's one thing that I'm constantly working on. So constantly working on learning and learning the community, engaging in the community and doing my best to do that, so.
I know you noted on here, you didn't show any twenty-three, twenty-four numbers. You didn't have those pulled. In your mind, you know, is, is this the least we've had or do you know?
From last year, I know that I did pull the number of exhibitors and it was around two sixty-four. So we're about steady as where we were last year.
I think if anything, that's what we'd like to see is more participation.
Do we, do we see any that maybe due to financial obligations? I mean, can we help there? Is there, is there kids that aren't in the program because the, the family don't have the financial means?
Yeah, so one thing we have found is that there are a few families, but with that, we try and do our best with the four-H council of offering, of offering some different financial ways as well. But also one thing we've also found is that some families, even if they do have that financial burden, they don't want to come forth and tell us that. And so, but we do offer that. And so we're gonna be looking this year to have some different ways of how we can handle that enrollment fee.
Well, maybe we could do something by offering so many, maybe like a scholarship, you know, so it's not a financial, just say, hey, we're gonna offer up to twenty-five, just saying I'm throwing out a number, so then they don't feel like it's a, you know. So something to think about.
Okay, thank you. I will, I will think on that and I'll let you guys know.
I definitely think we, we want to help support. We, we definitely want to see the program grow.
Okay.
I think a lot of this that you, you two guys were talking about was discussed last night.
Correct, it was.
Hey gentlemen, one thing that we can offer is, um, we have seventy-six kids enrolled in our program. And so at our upcoming, we've got several events coming up, but at the Christmas party, we're gonna have mentor mentees' families together. Um, that's seventy-six kids that to get them in a program like this can also help us continue to change the path they're on. Um, so I can kind of take and run with that. David Marshall talked through a little bit with you, this scholarship program, because a lot of our kids, their families can't.
Right.
But if a family member can't step up to participate in four-H, the mentor will.
Sure.
And then the other part with this, Richard, you mentioned is, um, T M O C is, um, kicking off our third year now in schools for the Stress Busters Program. We're in schools every month, all three schools. So we can take in, um, some of this messaging and work into one of our sessions. And we'll work with Veronica and the team on that to see if we can't do a rally in the fifth and sixth graders, so. And then we also have the girl boys events coming up in January through March, where we're gonna have about five hundred youth for both class or each class. So that may be an opportunity where we can have a booth set up and do a rally to help out too, if you might.
I do think to add to that, because I was at that meeting last night and I'm on my third ten-year member four-Her and we also were club, club leaders way back in the day. So some of the things that I think has changed, um, from my perspective is it's getting really hard with computer-based registration, so many deadlines, so many different things. It's really confusing. And, and, and of course, they know this is nothing that I haven't complained about before was I have to call every year and say, I can't get into fair entry, or can you help me? And we talked a lot last night about that. Those conversations need to be put into action. The answer is there from last night's discussion. That's there. There was amazing discussion. It's how do you get that discussion into deliverables? Because there are some real barriers with being able, people to be able to have the time, the energy, the resources to just get through the paperwork and through the deadlines, um, because it is pretty confusing. And a lot of the things last night we talked about was, well, that's Purdue and they won't change it. We need to be pressuring some change. Because it's, it's pretty difficult sometimes. And then, um, and then another thing that we've noticed, livestock, any livestock that you care for gets a lot more expensive than it was ten years ago. Right? So, so partnering with potentially local farmers, say, hey, you know, can we help you with feed? If you'll house, you know, a, a pig that a kid down the street doesn't have a farm for, that's the kind of stuff we're talking about. Right, like, and then, okay, let's try to make sure we get that kid into four-H, we get them hooked up to spine or cow or whatever. And then that particular farmer has some help because. And then that particular farmer has some help, because a lot of the things, you know, we keep four other pigs in our house. And that's for family members, that's because they don't have farms. Just think if we extrapolate that out, right? And I know not every farmer can do that. I know that's expensive. So if there is stipends or monies, that would be a really good thing to help offset that pet cost and, and things like that, so we can get kids, anything we can do.
You're talking about providing opportunities.
Yeah, um, but we have to get them to your first, because enrollment comes before picking your, your, your stuff. So if we can have some things ahead of time, we can support if you're interested in this or that. But the first is enrollment. You got to get them enrolled before you can get on picking their projects.
I have a suggestion for enrollment. I, I worked in extension for 10 years. When we had the enrollment, 450 to 500 every year, um, you have to get in the schools. We were in schools two to three times a week, every week. Those kids knew our faces. Um, we came with fun programs for them, so when it came time for 4H recruitment, they already knew us. They associated us with, with fun programs. It was easy to get kids.
It was paper too back then.
Yes.
You know, and we talked about that last night.
And we, we put all the paper enrollments in ourselves in the office. I mean, it was, it was a lot more time-consuming back then, honestly.
So during that timeframe, what was the staffing situation? Did you have?
We had two educators and the program assistant.
Okay, and so we have two educators but no program assistant. When the, when the contract changed for that third educator, that took us down a notch. And that program assistant, I think, is invaluable, because they are the person that can get into school.
That person really did on a regular basis 4H. They did all the school enrichment, they did all the clerical stuff for 4H, they hired all the judges. They did, they did everything for 4H.
That, that change was made because of the drop.
I know.
Didn't create any drop.
Yeah, I know.
That happened because we were trying to react to a lot less enrolled, enrolled age, so.
I understand, but it does make it challenging to get into the schools.
I think we're willing to, I mean, support anything. I mean, you know, we just, I, I think we're very open.
That meeting was great last night. I really think that if, if the, if what was said there is translated into action, that's going to be, you know, there was a lot of management, because you had a lot of people who were on the ground saying, here's what we're seeing. And, and I think that that, that was good. And, and to the extension credit, that was a great meeting last night. They ran an amazing meeting last night. But in the information extracted from that, it's, it's going to, it's going to help if we can just translate that into action.
And I think we're ready to back up too and help with, you know, whatever that looks like. We want to see it, obviously.
Okay, is that all you have?
Yes, thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
I'll keep you guys updated.
Thank you.
Carl, you've already spoken. You probably don't want to talk again, do you? We can talk if you want. Good seeing you, by the way. Shana?
All right, I just got a couple of things this morning. The Fall Code IT Academy at O C E D P will be CompTIA IT fundamentals. It will cover basic understanding of how computers work, troubleshooting techniques, and cybersecurity fundamentals. The Fall cohort will run from October 7th through December 9th. And participant, participants must be at least 18 years old by October 7th, 2025. So it is something that potentially seniors in high school could do to get a jumpstart on certification as well. And they have to reside in Orange County. Those applications close on September 27th. And then with it being budget season for you guys, I'm a little bit early on this, but just to be proactive, I wanted to bring up that our contract, O C E D P's contract with the county expires on December 31st. So that was last renewed in December of 2022 and covered the years 2023 through 2025. So I wanted to request the renewal of that contract as well.
Do you have a good liaison with the county?
I think so. I think he's doing a pretty good job.
I don't know about that, but I'm sure we can make that happen. Okay. Yeah, yeah, it's, do some good work, very good work.
Thank you.
And we don't change anything. It's just set on a levy, right? Or it's set on a?
We, it's 10% of the economic development impact.
Right now, it's set up on a certain thing, and Zach and Catherine and I have talked about that. Anticipate any possible changes, it's the way we do that, so.
Morten?
It's Morten.
Say it's good.
You think I'm?
That's all I've got.
All right. Randy?
I forgot to give you my papers earlier. I was too busy yapping and talking. Okay, so I have two things, but the first one is the quarterly report for the Health First Fund. And as you, this would cover April, May, and June, I don't like. Okay, so the funds for the second quarter, um, some pretty impressive things. So I want to remind you that this year, those funds doubled. Next year, they're going to be reduced by about 75%, so we're, it's, next year's going to look a lot different. But um, today, the vital records, so for those three months, with vital records and vaccines, we had 158 birth certificates issued, 428 death certificates, uh, 27 child vaccines, and 16 adult vaccines. The environmental um, and sector control and food inspections, we had property complaint investigations were three, sewage complaints and investigations were 12, indoor air too. Sewage permits and licensing was 78, permits issued and inspections, that's, that's tattoos, eyelash extension, pools, education, that was 205. The mosquito education was zero, but the food complaint investigations were 41. Uh, food permit and inspections were 96, and the food education outreach was 282 for that quarter. That was um, for that division. If you turn on the backside, um, Tonya, you're here, so I don't want to take your.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay, okay.
You know that.
Okay, so the tobacco prevention and cessation for this quarter, they had the Monon movers and hometown scoops, they partner to educate participants on the dangers of smoking and vaping. Um, the mobile lung unit has visited three different areas in our county to help screen residents for lung problems related to tobacco use. And then I'm tabling, so there's been many festivals, um, fairs, health fairs at French Lake, uh, at the French Lake Resort. Also allow outreach to a larger number of community members. They learn about the effects of tobacco and receive resources and aid in quitting. Quite a bit of work in that area. Just to note though, that as of July 1, the Health First Funds KPIs have, have changed, and we will no longer be funding tobacco cessation and prevention through the Health First Funds. Now, those KPIs have been kind of moved to the health liaison side, so you're going to hear a little bit about it. But funding with tobacco cessation is no longer a thing with Health First Funds. That was changed in administration. Um, and if I got that wrong.
You did.
Okay, I got it right. Uh, T M O C, Z Ben's already asked Priscilla, and I can just go ahead and read these through, but you, you've probably heard a lot about these already. But the Aging Empowerment, that was 110 senior members, members of the community who attended that gathering. That was a pretty impressive gathering. You've heard a report on that. Beyond the bottom line, there were 80 community, community members from our community and surrounding counties that came together. This is the second, um, we've had the, uh, no, I'm going to switch on down to. The Teen Chef and Liberty Garden, the students continue to learn and cook those self-sustainable skills. In addition, the Orleans Community Garding has taken, garden has taken shape and will be available in the fall. That's pretty impressive. If anyone's not been there, it's right by the Monon. Um, they've been doing quite a bit of work on it. Veterans Kids Camp, Summer Camp, uh, these are pretty special, because there really hasn't probably been as much movement in getting our local veterans engaged in community and in mentoring, and also in um, just all-out community involvement. So lots of progress there. We had two, um, Priscilla and T M O C had two um, summer camps, serving 40 kids. Each were held in June. The youth also learned about outdoor skills, sports, and recreations. Uh, and lastly, with T M O C is the bed building. In um, cooperation with the Lost River Co-op, community members built beds for youth in the county. And because, you know, there are still a lot of children who do not have suitable sleeping arrangements in our county. And then I think you did get a wonderful um, donation of how many, how many mattresses?
The Sealy Mattress Company donated 75 mattresses that are under our buildings. Fender Lumber is going to give us a 50% discount on material. We had a private donor give us $5,000. So at the Harvest Festival on October 4th, we're going to bring the community together to build upwards of 100 beds for kids in, sorry, in Orange County, so.
And then lastly, the school health liaison section of that grant, or of these, these Health First Funds. Um, school presentations with T M O C was in April, was experiencing um, nature. The, also the tobacco fair booth, we interacted with 25 com- fam- community members there. The vaping education, developing an online parent vaping education video, as well as the students, for students of, for alternative suspension. Um, had CPR, 40 staff and coaches were trained in CPR in this quarter. And then the Safe Sitter, there were six students who were trained in Safe Sitter program through this quarter as well. Um, and then the monthly wellness challenges continue at Orleans and school order staff. So huge, big quarter.
That deserves a round of applause.
That's phenomenal. So, and then one of the things I want to mention, please, 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 this is important, and everybody in this room, this is important, um, because we would like your attendance on this day. Um, this has not been made kind of super kind of public. We're still in the structuring of the day. But Orange County has been picked by the Department, the Indiana Department of Health and Dr. Weaver to be the first county to do a um, kind of a, what have you been doing event with Dr. Weaver and her team. So our date, I wrote it on my hand here, is September 29th, it's a Monday, from 2:00 to 3:15. And the letter um, has specifically stated that any folks who have been involved with this, especially um, leadership, um, should really try to attend that. Uh, we are planning a presentation, um, what we've actually done with these funds in the last two years. So it's, it's going to be a pretty impressive event. I think it's important, because we don't know why Orange County was the first in 92 counties to be selected. Um, so we really, we need community participation, we need your participation in that day. It's an hour and 15 minutes. Um, we have guidelines on what we're supposed to talk about. We are working on that, but please save the date. Because as you know, and I've already stated, these funds went from 400 and something this year to 120 something-ish for 2026. So we need, this is also kind of a rally cry. And it did come to my attention that there are some counties who have not even spent their funds yet, which is, I don't know.
I think that's what's precipitated some of this reduction.
Yeah, and it hurts us all. So our community has to be there, show up, say, yes, we need these funds.
State legislators.
Yes, we're supposed to invite them. Um, I've been working with a few. We have a plan to personally invite, but we can, we need you there. Just plain simple.
I think it's important to get them up there to see what's been a topic here.
Yeah, I think it's going to be a pretty impressive hour. Um, we've, we've been planning for this. We are the only county, to our knowledge, in, in the 92 counties that did a gap analysis that informs this year's funds. We did that last year to inform this year. That's pretty proactive. And to my knowledge, we're the only county, so we have a lot to celebrate. But we, like always, we have to prove what we're doing, and that's our day, so.
And what are we doing this time?
Community building.
Community building.
Yeah.
September 29th, 2:00 to 3:00.
2:00 to 3:15, yeah. More details to come on that when the, when the planning committee kind of gets closer to what we're doing. Um, and we may end up asking somebody to kind of speak um, for the commissioner's side of it um, briefly. But again, we'll figure all that stuff out. Let's just please mark your calendar and then everyone in this room as well. Um, secondly, I, I am, I do have a request today. Several months ago, you approved some, uh, a line item move for the Health First Funds. We were going to send all the school nurses to a conference. Um, that conference came and went. They did not participate in, in it. So there is uh, $2,173.68 left over that we would like to keep in that allocation, but allow it for materials. Because the other part of that money was materials. I think now we definitely need to keep materials in schools when we do presentations. So I'm asking permission to not return that 21,000, or 21, 2,173.68 back into the general for the Health First Funds, but to keep it for materials and let Jamie spend it for materials um, with the smoking cessation and all the programs that she's doing with schools. That's the request.
I'll make the motion for that.
I'll second.
We need that.
Council needs to be involved in that as well. So we recommend it, second to the council for their approval as well.
Okay.
Have a first, a second, a motion of second. On paper?
Aye.
That's it, I think.
You know, Randy, I think uh, all the things you folks have done, all you folks have done, with these services and things that are being provided, I think one of the most important things, and probably one of the reasons that you folks have got invited, the only one that's been included is because the reporting and the professional way these things have been captured and recorded on, I think it's had a lot to do with it.
Viewing the notes?
No, it's uh,
The teams have done a really good job.
If you don't blow your own horn, it's why it escapes a lot of people, so. It's uh, it's important we do that. And it sounds like there's a pretty good support group there, maybe you folks can go out, help get your enrollments and things up. That's, that's what we're looking for, we want participation. I think, I said this a million times, I'm, I'm an old 4H person. I tell you what, you get your foundation, 4H, it's some really good values and things are, are learned and responsibility is learned. So it's a very good program. I just want to see more people in it. Okay, Priscilla, it's your turn.
Uh, real quickly, um, if we can get that Courthouse Lit Up Purple effective September 1st through the 30th to help us with our suicide prevention month of activities. We've got the walk on the 13th. We've also got three events with Dr. John Kiesler from IG, who will come in and do um, healing the heart after suicide. Jane will do three classes on prevention of suicide. We'll display the car wrap at that event, and then we also um, have a few more events planned. So if we can get the Courthouse Purple, um, September 1st through the 30th.
I do not have purple. I don't even know if I can get purple by some level.
Do you have teal? Because suicide prevention's purple and teal.
I've got to order all of that. I mean, I can order it, surely it should be here by the end, if it comes in purple.
Um, while he's looking, I'll move on um, in sake of time. Um, the other thing is, under, in preparation for this September 14th, um, 175 anniversary, which we're so excited about, um, if we can look at cleaning um, a little bit of the under awning as people, because they're going to do tours, there's going to be a lot of people there. There's a lot of bird dew, like underneath. Um, I don't, you need a pressure washer or a fire company?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, perfect. And then I'm super excited, Centers for Congregation, uh, we received a grant, not for administrative costs, but to facilitate events in our county. Um, it's in partnership with Beechwood Christian Church, and it's for $65,000. It will allow us to do our second Girls Empowerment Event. We will add a Boys Empowerment Event for 2026. And then we will do um, four parenting classes, where the first class will start in October. All three counties will partner with three different churches, and we'll do parenting classes um, with our youth. Then the second class is an event with girls. The third event is an event with boys. The fourth event is to bring the families together. A lot of it's building relationships, that healthy relationships with part of the men's being, um, to prevent youth pregnancy. So just so you know, that's a good one for us. Um, for the Girls and Boys Empowerment, um, something to celebrate, this was a big event for us last year for the girls. Um, because of the funding, we're actually, as a county, going to be able to invite in Lawrence and Crawford County High Schools to participate in this event in Orange County, so that's a. So that's a big one. And that's it, thank you, guys.
All right. Josh Gray, you're up, bud.
Okay, so I'm just here to, just to make a presence and say things. So, but now as a taxpayer of Orange County, I was, I had a question, if not a request. Out in Stamper Creek County Road, one fifty north, pretty much all the way to three thirty-seven, is in really bad shape. I don't know if it's on the, to get repaired, but the road is narrowing. The edges are crumbling, the middle's up in the center where it's just coming up in the center of the road. You can't hardly pass get-around vehicles without having to get off in the ditch.
It's on the radar. We've, we've been, is that the one here that was by, like Bogartis?
Yes, yes.
That's, it's, it's on the radar.
Okay.
Here in the next.
I assumed it was because I seen the salt cuts for the storm culvert, so I didn't know if those were getting replaced also. But it's just, it's getting to the point you can't even hardly get past an almish. So it's just narrowing, it's mother nature's.
Probably wasn't under damage, you know, it.
It is.
Can you do anything about the wood crap?
It's probably, what, two districts, probably sees in my. Yes, it sounds like it's on.
Okay, all right, well, we appreciate it. It's, it seems like there's more traffic out there these days for some reason too. So it's been, it's just been an ongoing issue for the last couple of years, for sure, so.
Traffic's getting worse everywhere.
I think so.
They've moved into his district now, it's been rare.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, John. Tanya, I seen you back there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I'm going to read this, I apologize. It'd just be better for all of us. Orange County, Indiana, has been identified by the March of Dimes as being a county with low access to maternity care services. In recent years, IU Health Paoli Hospital has seen a fifty-eight percent increase in pregnancy, in pregnant moms requesting care due to closure of the Lawrence County Delivering Facility in December twenty-two. As a result of that, we've tried to come together as a local community, partnering with Lawrence a lot of times. In the last two years, we've had a community baby shower. It has been very successful, but because of a lot of funds and things like that, being a little shyer this year, we have elected not to have the one in Lawrence, and we're just having it in Paoli at the community center November the eighth. Since it is a, it is going to be led by IU Health Paoli Hospital, but everybody at the table are nonprofits like Lick, myself, Life Family Resources, et cetera. Now, others can come in if there's an insurance company or something, that would be beneficial to be there. There is a fee for them, nonprofits are free. We were asking, wanting to know if you all would be gracious, since it is a community event, not only for us, but I will say we are inviting folks in Lawrence who will be delivering down here at our hospital. But it should bring about two hundred people into that event, is what we're estimating, if we could have that facility for free on that day.
I didn't have a problem with it.
I know, I already have a contract for it, and I can't remember if they've already made some payments.
I don't think, well, I don't want to speak for them. They didn't think they had, and we were in our last meeting.
So, yeah, so that if, yeah, that would be easier if they haven't made any payment, for sure. Just not to go through that process, but, yeah, I mean, like, Charles decision is worse.
I'm good with it.
It's going to work.
Make motion.
So then is the score of the twenty-five dollar cleaning fee? Okay.
What was left, just do the twenty-five dollar cleaning fee, is it? And they'll do the tables and chairs and all that, you know. Yeah, awesome. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, I'll do the motion second.
Motion to second on favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. Garland, you have a no.
No, I'm good. Thank you, though. Appreciate it.
Jerry, you already spoke. Guess you want to talk about anymore, huh?
No.
You're welcome to, if you want. Missy.
Just been a while since I've been here, just wanted to come see you. And what a big meeting this is.
Pick the right one.
We covered hot items, didn't we?
Yes.
That concludes the audience portion. Let's go to technical office.
Thank you. I believe we've gone through the first three on my county attorney report, leaving the fourth item. We did receive an email, which I forwarded on to commissioners from Will Neffker regarding the Purdue and Sackler's bankruptcy settlements. He recommended that the county commissioners approve that plan. And there were also participation form documents that were emailed to Marshall Noble with a link to sign, which he did. So I would need formal acceptance of the plan and retroactive approval authorizing Marshall to sign the participation plan forms.
Motion.
I'll make, Marshall.
I'll second. One favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And then the only other item I have that was not on my report, I'm working with Sandy. She did receive from IU Health a, regarding a lease agreement dated December first, two thousand and five, stating that the tenant was exercising a second option to extend the term of the lease for an additional ten years. Extension term shall commence on December first, two thousand and twenty-five, and expire November thirtieth, two thousand and thirty-five. So we are trying to obtain a copy of that lease agreement to review that before we present that to commissioners. Thank you. I have no other items. Thank you.
That brings us to you, Madam Auditor.
The only thing I have is a request to do a rehire, trying to fill close position I tried, when it didn't work out, so he's asking me to try to refill that position.
This is an appropriate position that you want to fill.
Yes, sir.
Motion.
Motion. Second.
Motion second on favor.
Aye.
Okay, well, we'll get you on your, but you have any information on the food and beverage that we've collected so far?
Our last one was twenty-five thousand, right? We received that the first, that in this month, like the first or third of this month, right?
Yes, yes, and I'm in contact with them. You have to sign a confidentiality agreement in order to get some of the information and everything. And we've only received, they sent, sent a report, and we've received through June. And in August, you know, will be the next month. There are a lot of businesses that, that aren't on the report that they sent.
So I've called the lady twice at the state, and it's the craziest thing. She's like, well, if you guys can go out and identify, and we'll, we'll, you know, we'll enforce it, but we really need you to go out. I'm like, you need us to go to every restaurant and buy something to see if they're collecting the debt? I mean, it's, I mean, to me, if you collect sales tax and you're collecting seven percent, not eight percent, it's pretty obvious you're not collecting the right amount. I mean, I think the state should be able to figure that out. But that's what the lady told me, I've called her twice about it.
My concern, they're not even on the list. I have a list.
That means they're not collecting it then.
They're not even, so what happened, like, at the, and I don't know the answers to it. At the end of the year, does the state say, oh, you only paid seven percent from June to December?
And I asked her that as well, and she's like, well, really, the restaurant will be responsible, but she didn't act like it for, she's like, and if you want, you all can just send certified letters yourself to have the, you know, sign. Because it appeared to me, when we've been talking, it's mostly businesses that are owned by outside entities that seem to be the struggle that we've seen. Like corporations that own some of the fast food restaurants. So the letter may have went to the local restaurant, but not to their corporate office.
And that could have happened, because I just got the list from Lonnie, the, you know, his locally list, so that's, or, you know, who he sends his information out to.
But I definitely think we got to get on it, so maybe if you can provide that, because she acted like we had to provide that for her.
I don't know how much I can provide and not provide.
Well, I think the confidentiality she talked about was, if you share the amounts specifically, then we know what the places' sales were, right? Well, that's, I mean, that, we don't want to know that, we just want to know.
That's like the aid keepers. You can't, you can, you can share who's paid.
Right.
But you can't share how much they pay.
Right, right.
And I understand that. I mean, they're, and, and on the list too, some of them are a business that goes by a different name, so you have to kind of track it down by the address, and you have to track down to know whether or not, you know, you're dealing, you're picking the right person, but.
The lady was not super helpful when I, when I called her.
The gentleman that I spoke with, he was great. He was, he was really good. So maybe I could give you a different contact.
The rattler chain.
Because I mean, it's a.
You know, they're the central repository. Everybody reports seven percent. Now, how big a deal is it to figure out that they're not collecting the other one percent? That makes no sense to me. They're the ones that's got the information in front of them.
I, I understand.
You need him to call.
Well, I mean, she, she's like, well, if you can just get that list for us, we can, you know, she's like, or maybe easier just for you to do it.
That's passing the buck.
We have to go through all their records and see who's not collecting it.
On my end, I didn't get a list of who all Lonnie sent out to, so I don't know the total list. I just went through what the state gave me, and, and just from my knowledge of saying, oh, this one's not on that list, and that address is not on the list, so they aren't paying.
I think the sooner the better. We either need to send them a certified letter, or we, because how do we know the state's going to collect the rares? We don't know, so we may be losing out, you know.
And it's not fair to the one, the businesses that are paying.
I went to a business the other day that actually has two, it's the same business, same building, but has two separate food entities. One's collecting it and one's not, and I'm like, I didn't understand how that, but.
I wanted to ask too, I don't, I, the hotels weren't on there, but I'm not sure when they're supposed to be.
July first is when they had to start collecting.
They wouldn't have been on that report that I received. I just didn't know the day they were supposed to.
I confirm that.
Oh, and.
Yeah. We'll definitely see that, I'm sure, when that amount comes in.
That's, that's what I was wondering about, yeah.
And we've collected twenty-two, and we've collected twenty-five. Do we know what period that's for?
May and, or.
May and June?
May and June is what I took it as. I haven't confirmed any of this, like you say, it's kind of hard to.
Well, we found by we went, like, I mean, one, one of the biggest fast food restaurants in Orange County was not collecting just a couple of weeks ago. And I mean, I even said something to the manager, I'm like, hey, you know, they look at you like you have two heads, like, they don't know what you're talking about. You know, so I mean, but I'm like, we sure went this place collecting the tax, obviously, you know, so.
Basically, we're a lot much a law, so, I mean, basically, tax evasion if you're not turning the tax in.
I don't know if there's a grace period, if they, if they give them a grace period. I don't know the.
I mean, do you think she can share with us at least who's not, so we can?
I'll have to look at the confidentiality agreement.
He told me about that, because he said, you obviously can't share, you can't say Marshall's hamburgers gave this amount, because then we would know what the sales were.
They'll have to.
Yeah, so she told me about that, but, but yeah, I mean, it was, she acted like we had to grease it, so.
I'll have to look at it and see if it gets into you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't know, my, my point is, whatever it takes, we need to do it. Because that's, you know, and it seems to me like that would be retroactive as well. They weren't required to collect the tax, and if they didn't collect it.
With a penalty.
It's obvious what their sales were, because the state has that, because they had to turn in the second percent.
But if they don't enforce going back and getting it, we're just out the money.
And they said that, like, with the letters we sent out, like, they have, that entity had to go onto the website and change that percent, but, I mean.
I know one business had it up on the wall, because it had your, your signature on it, I think. But they had it right by the cash register.
I don't know, I don't know, but it's, it's something that we need to get handled, for sure. It's a lot of.
Well, you brought that jar to you. Yeah, so we need to work on, I'm happy to help with whatever, too, like, you know, so.
Anything you need from us, let us know. And if we need to contact the state representative to rattle their chain at the, or to remedy. We can do that as well.
I really don't know that this is my position, my, I'm not trying to step on anybody's toes. I just can tell you what's been deposited into our account. And they did, I did sign a paper, and they will give me the reports. That's all I'm saying there. I'm not going to any businesses and asking to collect them.
Not if we can count on you today.
I guess everybody, we're going through the list here. Mr. Harper, you have, did you have?
I don't have any.
Harper?
I, I don't have anything, I think everything I was going to talk about.
Um, the only thing I was going to say, Safe Haven was out cleaning the other, was that yesterday? Highway clean, that's nice.
We picked a great day to do that, too.
It's a hot day. Hot day, for sure.
About protesting, I can tell you.
Actually, there's some seventy days, so, yeah.
Okay, one thing I have is, we get, you know, our other, our other renter is in, our temporary renter is in the buildings, the JSI buildings, so presently, and for about the next, at least three months, the JSI warehouse building, our warehousing is bringing in about forty thousand a month to the county, so it's, well, it's twenty-seven thousand more than our actual payment would be in building months. That's been helpful as well, and it certainly keeps that building off the taxpayers. It's carrying itself, so that's all good. That's really all I have, and if there's nothing else, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, please.
Motion second on favor.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody, for coming.